Good evening. We're going to call the Lepore County Council regular meeting of October 28th to order at this time. If everybody would please stand for the pledge. If you have a cell phone, turn it off. Mr. Yagelski, could you lead us, please?
I point the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Monitor.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Mullenauer.
Present.
Mr. Novak.
Present.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Present.
Mr. Santana.
Present.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
And Mr. Yagelski.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I need approval of the October 28th agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Santana. Is there any questions, comments on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the September 23rd minutes. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer, second by Mr. Santana.
Correct.
Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment, public comment is now open. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody that keep looking towards the back of the room, is there somebody back there? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Department head reports, is there any department heads? I know we got at least one that talked about coming down tonight. Good evening, Mr. Ira.
Still number one?
You won.
Appreciate that. Good evening. I'm here to first request permission to spend for computers. We have a few that need replaced. I had sent a request and it's going to come out of the probation user fee fund. It's just permission to spend. It's not on the agenda. It's just coming out of user fee account to cover those computers with the max of 8,600, although I'm trying to work with Darlene to knock that down some. So not to exceed 8,600 would be the request. And that'd be out of the 2102 account.
Mark.
Mark.
What's your pleasure?
Well, from what I'm hearing, I mean, it all sounds good. Again, I refer to legal and auditor. Can we do that right now? Can we?
Yes, it's supposed to be.
Permission, yeah, permission to spend, doesn't have to be advertised?
No. What's your pleasure?
Is that your motion?
No, not yet. How much, how much is it for?
Not to exceed 8,600.
Not to exceed 8,600? We do have Darlene right here. You're privy on all this. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions, comments? Why didn't you get on the agenda?
Well, I sent it in and I just sent it in a week or so ago and I was informed by the auditor, I can either wait for the November meeting or come at Department Ed comments and request it. So since I was here already, I thought I could kill two birds with one stone.
Okay. Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. Then the second request I had is to allow me to pursue a grant, 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant that we feel would fit pre-trial salaries. We're going to ask for the whole amount. There is no cap from what I understand, but I know that it's being pursued by all sorts of jurisdictions around, but we thought we'd try to get it fit. The first two years is straight up, we don't have to worry about it. Third year is a 25% match by the county. Fourth year is a 50%, fifth year 75, and then six years, it's done. But we thought if we can try to pursue this and at least get one, if not all four positions covered by that, we're up on something. And when I asked, interestingly, I sent an email and I said, when would the recipients know when they receive the grants? And they said, probably by the end of the year, since it starts January 2020, I would kind of hope, but.
Mr. Yagelski. Mr. President, motion to support. We have a motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Ms. Rosenbaum to support. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other department? Good evening.
Hello, Jeremy Sebicki with the County Parks Department. I just wanted to, since I'm here, update you a little bit. The season winding down, fall colors are in full swing, so people, everybody come out and see the colors before they fall. You know, we get some rain and wind, they're going to be gone, but really good right now. The Luer County Park project, we've got, the Building Trades Group is constructing the new shelter out there with that DNR grant we've got going on. The paving was done this past week, so we've got a new parking lot and our old Chip and Seal parking lot is completely paved. So like I said, the Building Trades Group has got the construction of the shelter, the frame is up and parts of the roof are done and they'll be putting trusses up, the rest of the trusses up tomorrow with their crane probably, so.
Okay.
Moving along. So we should be about 75 to 80% done by the time the snow falls, we hope, and then we still have all of next year to finish up all the rest of the stuff. We had a rain garden to go in to take the water out of the parking lot and slow it down and treat that and things like that. And then benches and picnic tables and all that stuff have already been ordered and so we're getting close.
Sounds good.
Lots of good improvements.
Absolutely. Thank you, we appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Any other department heads? Good evening.
Hello, Lynn Spivak, Lepore County Treasurer. We had a successful tax sale, October 17th. We made $888,887. Ninety-two registered bidders and out of the 92, only 47 purchased one property or multiple properties. Then we also had a surplus on top of the 888,000. The surplus was $5,798,396. That surplus will stay in the county until the redemption of the property by the actual owner. One of the Long Beach properties went for $910,000 in surplus. So that was probably our highest bid that I, as treasurer, have seen before. So these tax sales aren't just the neighborhood bidders, sometimes they are and sometimes they're money makers. So that was the process of the tax sale. And then I just want to remind the public that the regular property taxes are due November 12th. It's a Tuesday, we are closed on November the 11th for Veterans Day, so we will probably have quite a few people waiting for us on the Tuesday opening at 8 o'clock. So from 8 to 4, but then at both offices, Lepore and Michigan City, we also will have payments being taken at the Horizon Bank locations. And then right now, we're getting more people doing it online, so a lot of the e-checks are, I mean, I think we might only be like at five and a half million. I mean, it's not booming out of 125 million that we collect annually, so it's still a very low percentage, but we're still encouraging people to do that online also. A lot of times we're walking them through the website as we're talking to them and they're clicking their buttons at their end, but if we get them to do it once, hopefully they come back and do it again the next time, so. So just a reminder, November 12th, property taxes are due, 5% penalty if it will be paid the next day.
Sounds great.
And postal service is slow. We're seeing mail come within four days of the post-stamps, so to have it on time, it has to be stamped on the 12th, but if you want to get it to us before the 12th, get it in the mail soon.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Department head is closed. Liaison reports, Mr. Rosenbaum. Start with you.
I've got a quick list. Attended redevelopment planning commission last month, we have another one on Wednesday. Attended the AIC conference in French Lick and at that conference, I was elected the treasurer of the Indiana County Council Association, starting 1-1-2-2020. I'm attending leadership report as a participant that is self-paid. I missed out on the juvenile court symposium even though I signed on it, but I want to recognize them because they had over, in excess of 150 people, which is one of the largest events that they've pulled off. Participated in the vibrant community workshop down in La Crosse on the first night due to conflicts on all the other nights. The last one is tomorrow night in Rolling Prairie at the New Prairie High School. And also recently attended the Hudson Lake Township Board meeting to help them get things in order for next year.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our newest council member, Sean Quinn. So I don't think you got a report, but I just wanted to, you're free to speak if you'd like to.
Thank you, yes. Been on this for a couple of days now, so I don't have a hefty report to give to you, but it's good to be on the council with you all and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, welcome. Mr. Santana.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Gardner.
Not a lot. I spoke with Mrs. Sosinski who will be coming up before you to transfer some money and you all have received Sheriff Boyd's email and update at the workshop, so that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Mr. Mullenauer. I got a few things. On September 25th, I attended the Lepore County Redevelopment Committee meeting also and on October 16th, I attended the Employees Insurance Committee meeting with Commissioner Dr. Corr, and HR Director Barb Mossman, Deputy Auditor Kristi Deckard, and General Insurance Representative Craig Menney. And tonight, we'll receive that, some of that information or all that information from HR Director Mossman.
Thank you. Mr. Yagelski. Oops, sorry.
Okay, I'm just starting. On October 17th, my wife and I attended the dedication and ribbon cutting, the grand opening for the Fremont Room at the new additional entertainment venue at the Blue Chip Casino and I know President Novak was there also. And the afternoon also of October 17th, I attended the dedication and another ribbon cutting for the open house at our new solid waste district facility on Ziegler Road. And I don't know if any of you have been out there, but I'm sure some of you have and it is quite a, quite an improvement. No more driving through the mud and the dust and you dump, you take your recyclable items right to the, I don't know what they call them, stalls or what, and they're marked well, although the first time I went out there, I turned the wrong way because I didn't read, but I corrected that. Anyway, I, it is really, really got to give credit to, compliment Clay Turner and his staff for that operation now. It's really just a fantastic facility, so make sure you stop out there if you can. And October 22nd, I am Councilman Santana, attended the Community Crossing Grant Award Ceremony. He took charge of the check right away, so you're going to have to talk to him about that.
I'll be making a presentation, we're not sure when, but before the meeting's over.
Okay.
Million dollars.
And the next thing, on October, also on October 22nd, I attended the Lepore County Health Department Committee Board, Committee Board meeting. And I think all of you probably received an invitation to the open house that they're going to have for their newly renovated water laboratory. The grand opening is December 6th from 12 to 3 p.m. And one last thing, on the 23rd of October, attended the State Board of Accounts exit for the Lepore County Solid Waste District. With the rules that they have, I cannot comment on it at this time, but I'll do so at our November meeting. That's all, that's all I've got. That's it?
That's it. All right, Mr. Yagelski.
Yes. Many of you know or don't know, I'm not representing the council anymore, but I just want to give a report out for the Swanson Center. Swanson Center Friday, November 15th has the dinner. I'm a commissioner pick, they just lost the change, I'm not appointed to the council.
Okay, but you're still on the board.
Because the commissioner's currently on board. So November 15th, invited the council members to show up that day, would be great, there's a dinner and some dancing later on and presentation that night from the Swanson Center for a very short little presentation, so if anybody would like to come, please let me know. And the other thing is, we got so much problem with that bridge lately, I guess, I don't know, we need that study and I guess ever since we did that study, we've been talking about bridges, so. If anybody received the email, we had a problem with Franklin Street Bridge again with the weather, had some underneath damage caused by the wind, some electrical conduit, there's some emergency work that had to be done. But in, on the recent accident that we had there, we made some improvements on there, so the cameras are all now functioning and are working now. We have some poles we put up there, so we have better angles there and we order the windows now so that the sun coming in does not cause any flare outs for the area.
Being done.
Being done, Larry's got that there, part of it. So we got ourselves caught back up and we took one step forward and one step back, but we're getting somewhere this year, it's unusual, so.
It's my understanding that the money that they saved on the project of the building that were able to, whatever it cost to fix that, when the waters came up, it cut out that and pulled the electric out of there.
Correct.
All right. My report, I just attended the Veterans Court, this last one with Judge Thorne. The other thing is, attended a meeting this last week regarding the criminal rule 26, so that's all I have this time.
There is one thing I forgot to mention if I could.
Really?
Yes, really. It has to do with the solid waste district. And I forgot to mention that they've been trying to adjust the hours out there, so just so the public knows that they are going to be open at least on Sundays now until after the weather changes, but right now with all the green waste coming out there and that way, they wanted to try and keep, keep it good for the public to even be out there, be able to come out on Sunday and I think it's 8 to 4:30 on Sunday and I think the same time for Saturday also.
Great, so just so, thank you.
Thank you.
New business, we're going to move item number five up to number one if there's no objection on that. So consider approval of final design of the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project, Mr. Yagelski. Mr. President, at this time, I think authorization to motion to proceed the final construction plan for the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project. We have a motion by Mr. Yagelski, is there a second? Is there what? Second. Second by Mr. Gardner on the question.
On the question, if I may.
On the question.
Again, this does not include or determine how much money that we are going to finalize for, again, it's the idea of moving forward to that point, but we have not appropriated a set amount yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the 2020 budget for Kankakee and Hannah Township Attorney Brad.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by.
I had questions though.
Well, we'll get there, hang on. Motion by Mr. Gardner, second by Mr. Mullenauer on the question. Mr. Rosenbaum.
Give me a second, the paperwork.
We're moving too fast for him, he's got to shuffle papers. No problem.
There's two amounts on the cover of the budgets and one is called a budgeted number and I just want to get to the right page.
Need some clarification on that, why there's like an actual and a.
Let me ask you, are you looking at Hannah or Kankakee?
They're both have, they both have different numbers under each column.
Okay.
So.
Fair enough.
Sorry. I had it. Here we go. The adopted budget, I just grabbed one of them, so the first one is, I think it's Kankakee by the number because it comes with Hannah. The adopted budget, thank you, is five, it's just under $578,000 and then it said adopted tax levy only $286,000. So does this mean that they have funds somewhere and that it's offsetting?
Specifically with Kankakee, you'll see the big difference there is in their cumulative fire fund and the reason why that is excessive is they have a balloon payment on a fire truck that's going to come up at the end of 2020, actually beginning of 2021, but the money needs to be there to pay it. So the cumulative fire fund is a rate-based tax. Essentially, townships are able to bring in money for this, for equipment purchases and that rate doesn't change. It decreases over time, it gets that. But then again, because it's cumulative fund, that money builds up over time for equipment purchases. At this point, that's why, you know, instead of their traditional 40,000 there, they've got 240,000 to make that balloon payment and those are funds that are already there in township.
Okay, because every line has a different number.
Yep.
On there, but.
But that's a significant, that's a significant difference.
Right. Okay, and I believe the Hannah budget is also very similar.
Right.
In Faschino, their number is much less.
Right, and Hannah does have slight changes from their budget from 2019. They're increasing their township board members' pay by $50 each a year, so $150 and then they ask for an increase in attorney fees by $500, they're anticipating some additional legal work next year.
Mr. Yagelski. Wait, were you done, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Yagelski.
Yes, thank you. So the percentage that from, from, for the budgetary amount, the percentage is below the, Ms. Winsky, I'm asking your question, below the levy, the tax levy number?
Um.
Which is 3.5%?
Is it below 3.5?
There wouldn't, the increase in levy would be below 3.5.
Both of them?
For both of them. The increase for Kankakee in budget would be higher, but again, that's because they're drawing from the cum fund, but the levy's not increasing by more than 3%.
Yeah, if it's not, the DLGF will make sure that it's below.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think we've done this a few times. For the public out there that might not understand why this is coming to us, again, it's because you have board members that could be on the fire service or working for the township or what have you and so that's why we have to do it because they can't vote on it for conflict of interest, correct?
Exactly. Traditionally, a township has a township trustee who presents the budget to the township board, which is a three-member board, and they vote as a legislative or the financial entity for the township. And these two cases, because both of their boards have a majority of volunteer firefighters on the board, the state has determined they cannot approve their own budget, so that's why we're here before you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, and because of timeliness of submitting it, I've got each of those for signature.
Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the 2020 health insurance premiums, Barb Mossman.
Good evening, Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. I am before you tonight to have approval for our 2020 health insurance premiums. We have seen an increase of about $150,000 roughly in our stop-loss funding, but because we are now receiving a prescription rebate on a quarterly basis, that will offset those funds, so we are asking that we have no change for our 2020 premiums.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Who's this with?
Our health insurance is with UMR.
Are you going to change that?
No, that is staying the same.
I have some issues with them. I'm sure there's other employees that are having issues with them compared to what we had in the past. Paying a lot more money, out of pocket.
Okay, I would ask if you bring those to my attention and have you also reached out to nail care coordinators to speak with them at all with regards to any issues to see if you can get a resolution.
You want to make sure you give the best product to our employees too.
And we are working, we are working with both Magellan, our prescription provider, and UMR to try to overcome.
They're not very cooperative either, so.
Okay, but if you'd like to meet with me, I would be more than happy to take the information and try to get that resolved for you.
I tried out in the year with you and I got nowhere with either one of them.
With what, I'm sorry?
As far as UMR or the prescription company, so they just kind of pretty much ignore whoever and say that's the way it is, so.
Okay, but.
So I'm not happy, I'm sure there's other employees that are not happy with what we've gotten the last year, so.
I had received complaints with regards to that, but I've also had some compliments with regards to the coverage also, so I think it's kind of 50/50. But again, if you want to bring your specific issues to my attention, if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I can take that information and try to help you get some resolution with that.
All right, Mr. Santana.
Barb, so when we enter into this for 2020.
Yes.
It is a contract, correct?
Correct.
So mid-2020, June-ish, July-ish, whatever, the representative from the insurance company can't come back and say, well, my mother company just called and says, we're going to have an increase. We lock into this agreement, it's a contract, we don't pay any more. Am I correct or is that, could that still fluctuate?
That could still fluctuate, yes.
It still could. Well, we're still, we're self-insured.
Because we are self-insured, so our claims experience, it's all going to be based upon our claims experience for the year. If we have a great year, then we are obviously going to see some money coming back to the county with that. If we have some high claims costs, that is obviously going to eat into our funds, so it's, it's kind of a gamble basically.
When we do, self-insure ourselves, I get that. Let me ask you this, in your tenure here, have you ever seen money come back to the?
Yes.
Really? Coming back right now? Super, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. Yagelski.
So it can change.
Okay.
I just want to remind the council, especially with looking at the next meeting, because that's when the race is coming about, or at least to talk about races. We were trying to get this to 70/30 type split years ago and we got to 25, 75/25, where 75% was paid by us, the employer, 25% by the employee. We're now, now, the last two years, down to 13% with two years prior to 15%. We're going in the wrong direction. We have to remember that these benefits we have are very well. I understand that there's certain individuals that are getting messed over because of the plan they're on, but we pay very well if the benefit's going out there. So I just want to remind us that we're, that we have been, this benefit is going in the wrong direction, so even though it's lower, we're paying the bigger, higher percentage of this thing. So we've given raises out the last three years prior to this, but we did not effectively change the amount of insurance that they pay.
So their benefits have increased.
Increased every year.
Mr. Santana.
Yeah, yeah, just for point of the minutes in that and Mark, you know, not to correct you, but I have to correct you. Just, just so we know, actually, we are paying, the county is paying 83% and the employees are paying 17.
Right, 27.
No, he said 13 and then he said 87 and so, it's all right, however you get it.
83, okay. It's 13% they're paying right now.
They, the employees are.
Yes.
We're paying 87 and we tried to have it at 70/30, then we went to 75/25, but in fact.
Same thing I'm saying.
It's 80.
85?
No.
86? Whatever.
We're paying, county's paying about 87%.
87 and employees are paying 13. So like he said, we are going upside down on this thing. Thank you. Just want to make sure the numbers were out there.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Can I just get what the total cost is, what it's anticipated to be? If you said it before, I apologize, I didn't hear you.
No, and I believe that, in that email that I sent, the total plan year expected costs are $9,675,929.
Thank you very much. I just couldn't, I couldn't get my head wrapped around the numbers with what I was seeing
numbers with what I was seeing until I heard that. Thank you.
Did you get a motion yet, sir?
No. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Molnauer.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions? I'd say we pretty much questioned that one beforehand. So hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Man, water, could you call the roll?
Yes. Give me one sec.
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Santana?
Aye.
Mr. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Yagowski?
Aye.
And Mr. Garner?
Nay.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Thanks, Barb.
Next item on the agenda is consider issuing public notice regarding hearing of disposition of county property, the Lepore County home and adjacent five acres excluding the county barn. What's your pleasure? I think we all know this is a long time coming, so this is another step in the process. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
It says, it says consider. We're gonna approve, we're gonna, you're gonna, you're going to, you're gonna vote to approve that we actually issue the public notice for public hearing at the next meeting? Okay, all right. Second, second motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Quinn. Is there any other questions? Mr. Yagowski.
Yes. When this first came, well, over all these years that we've been trying to get rid of this property, when it came up that we were actually gonna do it, then it was like, okay, we have to consider it, consider the actual building. Then it was the building and the barn, and then it was supposed to be the building, the barn, and the, and the property. So that, so the commissioners were authorized by the council to get those three, to find out the value of those work. I have the minutes of the meeting, and I can tell you that it was sped. So this only tells me this. If, I still want, in my, my final vote, that it's all three things, because I at least like to know what that is, and what the property's worth or not worth.
I believe the, I believe the commissioners received an appraisal on that, but we've had meetings where we've talked that the county, the barn, and the additional 100-plus acres of farmland was to be kept.
No. I had minutes in the meeting where the council voted and authorized the commissioners to go out there and get prices for all three. And we didn't say they're gonna sell.
Appraisal.
And they did.
Mr. Yagowski, but you all had indicated there was not a desire to sell the farmland as well.
We didn't know. We said, we need to look at it, just like we didn't know about the other adjacent properties. We're supposed to do it in three steps.
Apparently, the appraised value wasn't shared with everybody on the council.
We didn't get a copy at all, no.
So maybe we can get that.
We can certainly do that. We can provide the other holder or someone else that has done an appraisal. But the, but the, the notice is just for the county home, the adjoining five acres. It excludes the county barn, and that's what our direction was from you all.
And at that point, we may consider the rest of the other areas. So we don't know yet. I mean, we, we don't know what the value is to keep it or not keep it. And that's our job to kind of...
Well, just so you know, the rental from the farm acreage is also playing a key role in the...
FMEC.
In the maintenance budget that you want. And the council's backed the whole notion of fairness of...
That's not part of my agreement. That could be part, we agreed to them, that was not part of our agreement. And there was never a vote on the council that way. Not for that.
The direction we've gotten from you was not to sell the farmland, just...
My direction was...
Direction from you is to...
Mr. Freeman, my motion, at the time we did vote for it, I have the minutes of it, was to get three, it was incremental, to get all three of them, they had to be done, because that was the delay, the delay, and the delay. So I want to get that number, and I'm, I may ask for some consideration to sell the property. I don't know.
We'll get you the appraisal, because I think one was going to supply the...
Just for a matter of, a matter of form, right now, we're asking for, is if it's gonna be okay to publish notice, and the resolution will only be for those two parcels for the appraisal. Are you okay in doing it in two separate meetings should that, something needs to be done? So...
I don't want to see us delay putting this on the next month's agenda. And we can talk, we can get that appraised value prior to the next meeting, then we can discuss that, because the urgency to sell vacant farmland, and I'm, for the record, I'm absolutely against selling the farmland and the barn, but I understand exactly the appraised value was asked for, and it should have been shared with everybody on the council. So we'll make sure that everybody gets that.
Okay, I guess my point of conversation is to this, too. Absolutely, we do not want to hold up advertising and getting this going. We've gone over four years, you guys, and we are talking in this situation of just the county home with the five acres that surround it. Yes, Attorney Freeman, we do want to know how much is that 100 acres worth? I know we have somebody farming it, and what, what is the balance there? How much are we making per year? And how much, and I know Randy just made a statement, and I'm gonna blow that off, because it's like, well, if we could get $6 million for that 100 acres, you'd still be not in favor, but that's your, that's your business. The barn, we absolutely said, don't do anything with, but the property, we want an estimate on. Let me share this with you real quick, as I checked with our maintenance guy, and this is, this is why, you know, after time and time, like Mark is saying, this has been four years-ish. And again, this council said, some of them weren't here when we did, we don't want to spend a nickel, not a nickel to taxpayers' money out there anymore. Well, guess what? Over the last year, we spent $7,335. I equate, or I multiply that time, four years, I come up with put near $30,000. 29/3. Cut it out, quit it, stop it. Let's get the thing on the, on the, out there to be sold and be rid of it.
We're doing exactly that, Mr. Santana.
I know, but it's taking a long time, sir.
I understand, but also understand, it's not as if the commissioners have been sitting on their laurels on this. There have been various applications. Remember, three times there was an attempt made to try to secure senior housing tax credits, induce private sector money, try to get that renovated for senior housing. Obviously, that fell through. And so they're moving forward.
I know they are, I know they are. But, but you know what? If we, if we said, let's go for number four, let's do it five times. They, they were of that kind of opinion and mindset to keep going and going and going. It's costing us too much money.
Agreed, and that's why they said, let's move forward, and that's exactly what we're gonna do.
For the record, in fairness, we should get a list of all the county properties and see what they're all worth, so that we can figure out if we want to sell off everything. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, sarcasm, might as well.
The appraised value is going to be for the five acres and the county home.
Welcome, that's correct.
And then the property per acre.
That's right. The commissioners will have to set a bid price, a minimum bid price. I mean, we're going to auction under this, under this process. But there is a statutory process we've got to follow, and you're holding a public hearing is part of that process.
Correct, but as far as the appraisal on the farmland, you have that appraisal, and you'll share that with everybody.
Absolutely.
And I believe we sent through, didn't we, Haldeman or one of the other farm firms, I believe, but I'll make sure that everybody gets it. I just remember hearing somebody talk about it, so I know it came back. So they did do it, but apparently we didn't share that. Not to say we, because I didn't have it, so... Is there any other discussion on the county home for the hearing next month? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration approval to allocate one. Allocate remaining funds for the hospital, from the hospital payment for EMS base to EMS base project fund in the amount of $999,159.95. Larry Lewandowski.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Santana on the question.
Now, I think he has something to report as far as this figure, too, also.
Yeah, we did, we did award the bid. We've got a contractor set in place. The price did come in at $954,000.
954?
Yes. And we're working with them right now on getting the costs down even a little bit more.
Beautiful.
So we're trying to do whatever we can to keep a good quality structure, you know, that everybody's happy with, and still get the costs down, and get it done within the time that we need to have it done in.
Mr. Yagowski.
954, does that include plans and drawings and everything up to this date? There's nothing?
Yes, we did, we did. Our own engineer did the drawings and stuff. We sent those down to state, everything. So we've done all that within-house, whatever we can.
Great. And the approximate date is June of next year?
We're trying to get, well, we're trying to get it done sooner, but the deadline for it to get them moved in is June 1st.
Are they gonna be able to break ground this year?
We are, we're trying to have the asphalt moved out this Thursday, and get footers in next week, and have it under roof before Christmas hits.
And this, and this is, I handle now the new, the newer emblems that are gonna be bigger?
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We already took care of number five, old business. I don't believe there is any. Correspondence? I don't have any. Ordinances and resolutions? None. Page two, we go to appropriations, transfers, and requests. First item is the recorder requesting permission to transfer.
Since it's just a transfer, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Santana, in the amount of $5,300. She's transferring from part-time to data conversion. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Lois Sisinski, Lepore County Recorder. Thank you. I, I didn't have anything else in the 300 accounts, because all of mine run pretty tight when I go ahead of budget. So this was additional and part-time to move over. Has to pay the backup bastion services that I have that's based on docs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Superior, number four, requesting permission to transfer from court reporter to psychological services.
Mr. President, again, since it's a transfer for court reporter, put it together, court reporter, 35, 246.87, and $160 education instrument training.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Alcohol and Drug Lads, and I spoke with her tonight and told her she didn't need to be here, that I would represent her. They are also transferring from a program supervisor for the grant match that they pay out.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Second, second by Mr. Molnauer. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Animal Shelter requesting permission to transfer from the donation fund to part-time account. And I spoke with Jane tonight, is there any?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
It doesn't matter who does it.
Motion in a couple seconds by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, real good with it. I'm pretty much all in favor. You know, when I see something that says donation fund, I just want to make sure, and I'm pretty confident that you checked on this. Can it be used for part-time money, or for a part-time hire? And then, as we always like to say, so it can be good, but if there's a shortfall in that account, you do understand, we don't want you to come back to us to continue this person's employment. You're gonna have to tell that person, I don't have the funds to pay you anymore.
Right, well, this is grant money that goes into the donation account that we...
As long as that continues, exactly. And we do that with every department. I'm content, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for talking.
Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Surveyor requesting permission to transfer from, for the replacement purchase of a copia machine. They're taken from several accounts that, they're transferred from several accounts in a total of $5,100.
And I'll second that from Rosenbaum. He made the first.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Santana on the question. Mr. Santana.
Just a comment. Again, the surveyor is under my, what you call it, for liaison. And, you know, Tony does a good job with this all the time, and not coming to us for money. Again, it's a transfer, and so I think we could all feel comfortable, and it's $5,100 after all said and done.
And they are working with Darlene.
Yes.
Yes.
That's why I want to make sure.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Coroner/Prosecutor requesting additional appropriation for Riverboat Wind Tax for the exhumation.
Exhumation.
Right.
Exhumation.
Autopsy expense in the amount of $5,900.
Exhumed the body.
$42.
This is the Bob and John Show today. So we came because out of his budget, he has to pay for the autopsies. That's what the statute requires.
We're okay with that.
And so, this was results from the Wasniak case. We had to exhume the body to do an autopsy to basically get a cause of death that was by an expert, by a pathologist. So we tried to avoid this through negotiation for six, eight months, nine months, and now they want to have a trial, and it's fine. So that's what we had to do. We did that earlier. This, had to go through all the hoops to get the exhumation. Bob did a great job in getting that all arranged and everything. And so I'm just here to support his request.
I'll make that motion, but I need from the auditor which fund we should take it from. I recommend it.
Riverboat.
From Riverboat, okay. So then the motion is to pay for the appropriations out of the Riverboat Fund?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Molnauer on the question. I have a quick question. How much is it, the normal autopsy is?
Like usually $3,500.
Yeah. $3,500. So this whole amount was to exhume this body, or was this the autopsy? It's a different type of autopsy?
It's everything. We had to pay the pathologist, they had to pay the cemetery at Swan Lake, and they had to...
It's a little different autopsy.
Bring the ball up, we had to take the body out. I don't know what the details are. Let's get a blow-by-blow.
All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
If there is a, if there is a conviction and sentencing, we're gonna request reimbursement, obviously, for whatever it's worth.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Did everybody vote in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody's kinda...
All right, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Maintenance, requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or Wind Tax, an amount of $20,000 for electrical, $25,000 for janitorial services, water and sewage, an amount of $24,497, and major repairs, an amount of $9,820. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Santana on the question. Here it comes.
Well, again, before we go much further, what, Riverboat again? Thank you. If it's going to come out of, okay. You explained the sheet, I don't know unless anyone's...
Do you see, I guess, just for clarification, since we're increasing these things, and we just finished the budget process, you kind of had an extraordinary year.
Exactly. We hit, we hit, got hit hard with some life safety issues earlier in the year that I took it right out of the budget and paid for it, hoping we could make it all the way through. But these are things that aren't gonna come up every year.
Right.
You know, they're fixed. There are things that needed to be done a long time ago, and we took care of them.
Correct. Let me say, let me say one more thing, and just, just a couple sentences probably will do it for its due, Larry, and that is, because we've had conversation, and he finds himself in a situation where, like, we were talking about jail food, and so on and so forth. He's out there shopping. He's, and so, expound on that a little bit, please.
Like with our janitorial, we went, I went shopping. We were using a company. I found that they were really charging us a lot, way too much. I've reached out to several of them. We're actually changing the first of the month, you know, I didn't wait till the end of the year. I cut them off the first of November, so we found someone that we're gonna be able to save costs on it, you know, in the coming years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Larry. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Clerk/IT.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for $297,660 to come out of the clerk's perpetuation fund.
I second that.
First and second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, for it to come out of the clerk's perpetuation fund.
Is there enough funds there?
Well, we don't have to have it, we don't have to do it all today.
The council does.
You sort of, we can string it out so that we keep the amount of money in there. We paid for it.
Correct. Can I ask one question, though?
One.
One of the quotes was for juvenile records. I don't know, does that work for clerks? The $15,840 was for the juvenile probation records, so I don't know that you can take that.
Are they up there in that room?
They're on the first floor of the courthouse. First, first office on the left.
So how much is that amount?
$15,840.
$15,840.
And the clerk only has $245,000 in her account.
So...
So we'll have to take the other...
They're not, they don't, they don't have to do it all in one year. They can, they can string it out. They can do so much next year, so much the year after.
Okay, so how much would you like to appropriate this year?
For the whole year of 2020? Or just a January payment?
No, this is for 2019.
This is still...
$200,000.
And then we'll come back and ask for the rest when...
Right. Okay, so $200,000 out of the clerk's perpetuation fund?
And $15,840 from Riverboat.
Do a separate motion, I can't do it right now. Okay. Right. Thank you.
So we have a motion, is that okay?
I'm okay, switching to $200,000.
Alright.
Do we wanna include in the 15?
We're gonna separate.
No, we're gonna do a separate one.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
So my second one is $15,000?
$840.
So $16,000, Casey just goes, okay, $15,840 from the Riverboat Fund, please?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda...
I just wanna make one statement on that, these records have to be done, they have to get cleaned out of there, it's, I, I think it's almost negligence for the clerk's office not to have had this taken care of before this date, and now it's, we're about to start construction, we've gotta clear out the space and make room for whatever, and go forward.
Mr. Yagelski?
This, I'm gonna make sure, we've been working on this, even a previous clerk, we've been working on this for years, this is nobody's fault, there's not a millions of dollars to do this stuff with, so they've been doing it solely over a process, nobody's negligent, and just unfortunately, when we're...
I don't, I don't see them working hard enough to get it done.
That's your statement.
That's my statement, and I don't care, I'll say that to each one of them in their face.
Again, I have the floor right now, I'm just... So I'm making a statement that we were, we've been authorizing every year when they've been coming for us, even the clerk that was a clerk prior to this, and we've been working at the same way. It's unfortunate that we can't do it as a process we wanted to, just like we're trying to get over the old records, and we worked on that process, too, so.
I think we all agree it needs to be done.
This, this is just for the Lepore courthouse?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have an, I mean, we'll come back for Michigan City another time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Cool. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax for jail medical, and courthouse jail medical, an amount of $30,000, and courthouse security overtime, an amount of $5,000.
I'll make a motion to approve, but I think we're gonna bring that $30,000 down, and the sheriff will speak on that. I'll make a motion.
Santana?
Yep, seconded by...
Seconded by Mr. Mullenauer on the question. You got something?
Well, I was just gonna say that we did pare it back down to $16,000, I'm really happy to report that as a result of our jail medical provider, the other day I walked in and a conversation with the jail medical provider with a local hospital, in which one bill they were able to negotiate from $7,000 down to $1,000 for us, and jail medical also found that an inmate that had been receiving services from us while he was here subsequently was released, and the hospital continued to bill us, thinking that that continued to be his billing address, and that we were the responsible party, our medical provider caught that and was able to get those bills eliminated, so, he was back on the hook for it. That's just the kind of thing that our jail medical's doing.
Good job. So, yeah, so, so my, my motion will, if you guys had, instead of $30,000, it's $16,000, take your five grand on top of that, our motion, my motion would be to appropriate $21,000 out of...
Riverboat.
Riverboat. And somebody seconded it before we got the...
Mr. Mullenauer did.
Cool. You good with that?
Yep.
Alright, is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. Oh, next item on the agenda is requesting permission to spend from K-9 donation account, 4104, for training equipment and training aids, in the amount of $3,600.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Quinn, let the record show, that's his first second.
Second second.
Second second.
I stand corrected. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.